Oh. I cannot hear this.
Hey, real quick, everyone, us on Zoom, we don't have any audio. I didn't want to cut off public comment there, but okay, thank you.
The yellow lines are not.
You're offset.
Okay.
It looks like you can all hear us, correct? Awesome. Nancy, would you like to make a public comment? I see your hand is raised.
Oops.
We can't hear you.
Nancy, unmute, please.
Okay. There you go, I think.
Now can you hear me?
No.
Let me turn off my. I was having so much trouble trying to hear the sound. Yeah, and I'm not listening.
We still can't hear you.
Oh, no.
Nancy, we can't hear you still.
Oh, dear.
Her audio is coming through for others.
Yeah, we can't hear Jake either. He's trying to speak. Oh, there we go.
Yay, yay, technology.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, we got you. Thanks, Nancy.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yay. Okay, because I wrote this, the whole thing up. I want to be able to give it. So I wanted to start out by just thanking you all for your good work, because I recognize the sacrifice you make of your own personal lives by donating your time to the serve our city, and I really appreciate it. But today I want to speak about the Spear Street Streetlight. You know, this issue has been a concern now for many, many months, and it's disappointing to all of us that it once again requires our attention. I checked my emails, and my first message to Scott Herbert was dated November 21st, 2024. And then there were many other requests from my neighbors before and subsequent to that email. We were finally put on the May 7th workshop agenda in response to Dan Sheridan's email to Ryan on March 14th. And there were 10 neighbors that signed that email. And we had five of us that were able to actually attend the workshop and speak in favor of the removal. We were ecstatic when at the following council meeting, you all voted to not remove it, but to have it shut off. So while we thought that was a reasonable compromise, we would have preferred shut off, but we were okay with just turn it off. So now here we are, we find out the consumers' energy no longer offers that option. And basically, we're faced with shut off or no shut off. I just want to speak in favor of please shut the light off. If the $500 is a concern, I couldn't hear what Karen was saying. But you know, we've discussed it, and the neighbors are willing to contribute towards that $500 expense. So just please think about the residents, think about the wildlife. I mentioned that in my last message, and I didn't want to revisit all of that, but owls, bats, my personal favorite, the lightning bugs, they all would be so much happier if you would turn off that light and particularly the residents. So please consider our wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
Anyone else online wish to speak? All right, I don't see anyone else, and there's no one else in the room. Um, okay, we will move on to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on July 14th. Can I get a motion? Actually, actually, a motion for both that and the closed session would be great.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of July 14th, 2025, and the closed session city council meeting minutes of July 14th, 2025.
Second. All right, voice vote, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, the first is the Algonquin County Sheriff's Department Agreement Presentation. We have a full cadre, and thank you all for coming, Sheriff Baker and his team, and Captain Enfield.
Sergeant.
Sergeant.
Sergeant. You know, I've got a thing with names, I'm sorry, and I know your name.
Right. You're in the spotlight, that's why.
There you go.
I will introduce everyone, though. Lieutenant Brandon Behrens, he's in charge of Road Patrol. Sheriff Frank Baker. Captain John Paul Danvilles. And Under Sheriff Mike Larson. It's going to be a short presentation, but we really wanted to come and get any questions, concerns from you guys, and just give you a quick overview of some things since we have taken over the contract with you guys, so. The first slide here is going to be your current deputies. The gentleman on the far right is Deputy David Regis. He is currently filling in for Deputy Castro while she is off on some medical leave right now. He started this to be his first weekend. He started last Wednesday, Thursday, so, and he worked an extra shift over the weekend, so. He's been doing a good job, from what I have been told. Steve Janik has some good praises for him as well, so. That's good that we can get those from the fire chief. Next slide. So these are just brief services, already the services that we provide here. Total Road Patrol. 60 uniformed personnel, there's, if I counted right, we have nine township contracts, and that's including this one here. That's just the contracts, that's not personnel from those contracts. We have four SROs throughout the county within our detective bureau. We have four general case detectives, a domestic violence investigator, and a digital forensics investigator. Specialty units within the department, we have a SWAT team, a K-19, a dive team. And I will say with our SWAT and dive team, they're multi-jurisdictional as far as agencies. We have some people from the Algonquin City Police Department on our SWAT team as well as the Gunland Tribal Police. And with our dive team, we have members from Plano Public Safety, as well as the Tribal Police Department as well, so. Also have our evidence techs, they're called out for any major type of scenes that need to have any further investigation done to tech for fingerprints and anything like that. Accident investigators, they come out at any major crashings where there's serious injury or death. We have a traffic team that is dedicated to solely just doing traffic within the county on secondary roads. Our honor guard, we have a crisis negotiator team and field training officers. Auxiliary units are the reserves, which are greatly utilized by the city of Sagatuck here. Marine Patrol, you guys are obviously aware of that, because they're utilized out here on the river quite a bit as well, so, and Animal Control. This is just an overview of calls for service throughout the years since 2018 when we took over. As you can see, they they've held pretty consistent throughout. I think we'll probably be closer to that 1,200 mark this year, I'm guessing, by the way we're going, so. Next one, this is just traffic stops here. You'll see a couple of years there that they were extremely higher than the other, and that was because he had a certain deputy here, Deputy LaJoyce. It was something he was pretty passionate about, so. Yeah.
And that was during COVID, right?
Just after COVID, yeah. So that was kind of just a brief overview, and we want to talk about some concerns that are currently going on here with the city, and I know the city across the river hears voice their concerns about some coverage issues, so just want to talk about how the current contract is currently ordered, you know, it's a 75-25 split with the county and the city. So it's 25% of that time, the county can utilize them in ways that we may need them, so if we need them to respond to an emergent call outside of the city, they're there. You know, a lot of the Douglas claims, it's it's unfortunate, because I don't think that their city manager is giving all the information when on current, some incidents that have been brought to my attention where it's she's been given enough information that it makes it, it makes us look poorly, unfortunately. So, and I know I have talked to the city manager about every instance that has come up, we've discussed it. There has been some times that I've had to own it for us, saying, yeah, we messed up here, but those are some growing pains that we're having, and we're working through those, so. Parking, that's the number one thing for this year. Knock on wood, we haven't had much for speeding problems, but parking has been a big issue, and I know our deputies have been doing very diligent work on making sure that people are ticketed at our parking and no parking zones, so. And I know unfortunately, Jamie has to deal with a lot of that. So. And then the other, I know another concern over here is the Marine Patrols. And a lot of that, there has been some budget funding through the state, unfortunately. We've been pretty fortunate to work through that here at the sheriff's office. I don't think every agency that has Marine Patrols is doing that, but we've been pretty fortunate to work through it. The biggest problem we're having is personnel working for Marine Patrol and hiring more, so. Getting those shifts filled that we do have has been difficulty, so.
Can I just ask for a little clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Want to wait, want us to wait till the?
No, next slide is questions, so.
On the Marine Patrols, we were told by one of the county commissioners that the county was cutting funding too, and that if we wanted to maintain the level we had or something, we might need to come to our own boards to get that, but what I'm hearing from you is funding wasn't cut, and you're just having trouble. Maybe I misunderstood, you're having trouble finding people to fill those positions, so what will we be?
It's actually the opposite.
Yeah.
It's actually the opposite, so. Every year, we find out from the state how much they're going to allocate to us from the Marine grant through the Department of Natural Resources. There was a hiccup in Lansing where there was some language changes that our side, meaning the state, was not comfortable with. That created the question, are we even going to get this money? The county administrator and I worked to find money to not only make up for our part of the budget, but to cover what the state grant would be, even if it didn't come through. So actually, it's to the contrary, the county made a bigger commitment to ensure that we had money to run that program. We just got lucky, and the state ended up coming through with that. So the whole budget was there, the county isn't going to have to expend any further dollars, but was willing to. The remaining challenge, as Sergeant Ha said, is finding the bodies to take the shifts to fill those. As you know, those are part-time employees, they have full-time jobs elsewhere. Back in the day when we started, it was school teachers, and it was perfect, because they had the summer off, and they could work as many hours as they wanted, but that dynamic has changed a little bit, and it's people that are business people throughout the day, laborers throughout the week, and they sign up on the weekends to help, and they're not always available. So there have been some shifts that have gone unfilled, but we've done a really good job in maximizing our opportunities.
So it's pretty much the same, then, the coverage is the same, except for when the shift can't be filled, but we haven't.
Correct. The budget for the program is what we expected it to be, it's just getting people to fill those.
Thank you.
And then I also have another question. Could you be more specific about some of the issues that Douglas had? I mean, you were kind of general, and we, or.
Both have all been passed on, guys.
They have, no.
So there's been some emails between city managers about the city being uncovered, per se.
The city of Sagatuck?
Correct.
Okay.
And as you guys know, we are not providing 24/7 coverage over here.
Right.
And I think that they might be under that understanding that there should be a deputy in your city of 24/7. And I'm sure the city manager has related to her that that's not how our contract works here. And again, I think she just keeps pushing that. The city was left uncovered, she will do weekly, I don't know how many times she emails the city manager, but she will do reports to him, saying that the city has been left uncovered for these hours.
Has that put any stress onto their police force, or their, or anything, any resources we needed to them?
Manager comes, this guy will hold me about him. I've looked at any calls that Douglas may have taken in the city, and they haven't taken anything.
Okay.
So.
Yes, thank you for that. I didn't know that. That gives me more understanding.
It's not the one where I said that we had a little hiccup, was that we had three city deputies on training for a week. And that was between, that was, I own that, because it's my fault for overseeing this, I didn't catch it, and I worked with the training surgeon saying, hey, we can't do this, or if we are, please let me know, so that I can make sure there's coverage over here. And then, you know, it was fortunate that week that it was, it wasn't during the summer, thank God. It was at more of a downtime, so there was a high call volume, and there was no calls that Douglas took within this city during that time.
And there was no specific high-level incident that, yeah.
No, sir.
Okay.
Just.
Yeah. It's good to see some familiar faces, gentlemen, thank you for being here today. And that's, that continuity is important for this community, I'm sure, as most of you heard, that's, that's been the, and I'm hearing less of it, which is something I did want to mention, is that when I first came back to the community, I was not here when the whole Sagatuck Douglas division took place. There was a lot of criticism, one of the first people I heard from was my aunt who lives across the street about not having a community police force anymore, and I think through your efforts and hearing good news about your deputies being out walking on the sidewalks and being visible has been helpful. So I think, I don't know if we've turned the corner quite yet on that, but I still think there's opportunities for us to continue to work to be better at that. The Sagatuck has never had a 24/7 police force, even when we had our own department, we never staffed the city 24/7. That just wasn't needed, and number two is financially, it just didn't make any sense to have deputies or have officers on the roads at hours of the winter and so, so far, so. When the Douglas, maybe that's just more of a misinformation, it sounds like Sergeant Ha, it's more misinformation. So I want to understand the issue, though, is that the city manager of Douglas has the expectation that if they have a need, and there's not an officer to pull from Sagatuck, was that the concern? Or deputy from Sagatuck?
I think their concern, from what I think, and maybe manager comes in a little bit more too, is that they think someone needs to be here, so that if something happens within the city, the Douglas officer doesn't have to respond, and then they're also concerned that if a major incident happens in their town, that they won't have a close officer to back them up on.
Well, they wouldn't have a close officer if you weren't under contract. I mean, there's more chances that you will be here versus how it was.
I agree.
So has that happened, or is this just being friendliness on her part?
To my knowledge, nothing, there's nothing bad happened.
Yeah, I just have some more comments. So in terms of the incidents, it's interesting, and Connor was a, just a pleasure to talk with. I'd stop and bother him all the time when he was taking radar up on North Street, or wherever he was, and he was just a pleasure to work with. I'm sorry that he left the department, but I have not heard, maybe people have just stopped talking about it, I've not heard any complaints about speeders this year. And typically, I hear several complaints, yeah, so that's a positive, whatever's being done, continue. So I just, you know, applaud the fact that, you know, Sergeant, or Sheriff Baker, your department, and the officers and deputies that are assigned here are really doing, I think, a good job. They're friendly. Every time I stop, they don't breeze by me when I stop to talk with them, which I appreciate, so I just, I just appreciate that service, and Sergeant Ha has been great to work with. And just will continue to find ways to work better with the department. Question for you is, what could we as a council be doing better to help you do your job better to service our community? Anything come to mind?
Nothing, I don't have a thought, but. I have a weapon, which is basically keep the line of communication open, so that any of the complaints, my job as the under sheriff is usually deliver bad news to people and talk about the things that aren't comfortable. There's carryover from five and a half, six years ago of a 24/7 operation that covered two communities that continue to be things we have to look into and address. And I would prefer that if you have a problem, you let us know directly. If you have a concern, we work together to fix that, and that we can somehow put these emails, public recorded meeting, going to say it out loud. If we can take the emails and the concerns from another community and their leadership that have never reached out to us, have never asked us to justify how or why we do things, we're not accountable to them for that purpose with this contract, but we are accountable to the entire county and the entire community, and how we allocate our resources. So I'm just going to ask that you all feel comfortable enough to reach out to myself or to Sheriff Baker with any concerns you have at any level, and we're willing to sit down with any group or any party that has a complaint or a concern, so that we can address that.
I'm just changing the subject a little bit, but what's the latest on any talk of having a school resource officer as part of Sagatuck Public Schools? I know there's been discussions about it, but I just didn't know if any more discussions have taken place.
I can only tell you what my involvement has been, and I don't want to speak for other people. So at the end of the last school year, I worked very closely with Superintendent Nydlinger. And he knew that there wasn't going to be an easy, short-term solution that would end up being long-term. So I worked with him on the requirements that I felt would bridge the gap, and that's when they hired former Captain Brett Enfield to be their security director. I don't know if there's going to be a continued relationship there or not, so I left it with the superintendent that if they wanted to continue with that route, and they wanted our assistance in selecting somebody and working to build the criteria for that, that we would do that, or if they wanted a contract with us to let us know. Kind of explain to them the time gap, that if they did choose to do that, and they didn't do that until a week before school, that was going to kind of put us in a bind. We obviously want to have somebody that's well-trained and mutually selected for that position, so that we can have them in place. So that's the best I can tell you, is that I know the hiring of Brett Enfield for that security was not the final decision, it was to bridge a gap so that they can make one. And I've not had any communication since then over the summer, so I'm not sure where that's going.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I, I have the same question as Mayor Proten, but I'll just add to it and say how, as a parent, how grateful I am to see the presence of your deputies at our school.
Both of my kids graduated from there, and I'm telling you, that was really awesome to see the community step up and work with us on that.
Yeah, we'd really like to see them there, I appreciate it.
I just wanted to make a comment real quick, and that is back in 2018, when you guys did take over, at that point, I was a shop owner, I had Del Sol. And, and I have to say that I was very critical of the changeover. You know, we have relationships that we have with our, you know, our neighbors and our friends that, you know, that I had with the Douglas Police Station, but over the last few years, that was before I was on council, but the next few years, watching and seeing what great job you've done in our town, you really have. And, you know, getting to know Janelle, who was on, and all of the first, the first, I miss her still, I know she's still working for you guys, but tell her I said hi. And, and all of the force, I think you guys have done a wonderful job here, and after a year or two, you sure did win my trust, and I think you've done that with a lot of people in town. So I hope you understand.
I'm going to bring it back a little bit. And, and Sheriff Baker and Under Sheriff Clark, both, when we did the orientation, I talked to you about the concerns, and typically, they're kind of from the same group, which is we don't have 24/7 coverage. And I was there when we did that turnover with the famous blood will be on your hands comment when we did that decision, and up until the week before we voted, Mayor Truster met with the Douglas leadership to say, what can we do to fix this? And they said, nothing, and that was it, so that's why we moved forward. But what I would, what I have noticed, though, that is helpful, is statistics, and you've done very well getting some statistics. And I don't mean to make this an interagency, but have you seen the fire department's statistics that they get to us? It shows us the time, the number of incidents, what they're for, the reaction time, how quickly people get there. And I know they have someone special on staff, but for me, if I could find something like that, and you do a nice job of that, but that lays out all the incidents that they are, the response time. And I know that the fire department now has a computer that can place help or people at it, or at all times, this, you have that too, I think. So if you could work on some kind of.
You did, you've done that on occasion for us. I know there's a few meetings where we've had that month
Yes.
of what the incident breakdowns were.
We can see that the challenge we have is, a lot of what we do is information that we can't just share with, with you or the public, because it's sensitive. You know, we've had this, this question from townships that contract with us, you know, they want to know a detailed information on a complaint that we may be investigating, you know, address, nature of the call, you know, let's say it's a sexual assault. You know, we don't want that information being out there that it occurred at this house, just to protect the, the rights of the victims involved, so we, our system doesn't readily pull that information out that way, but we can talk to our administrative staff to see if there's maybe some little more detail we can provide, but it is something that we consciously do. We provide, you know, an overall report that like you get from Sergeant Ha, but, but as far as the details of it, it's oftentimes, it's intentionally.
And I'm looking more for response time and the number of incidents.
Yeah, and the response time for us is a little more of a challenge to get, because it's something that we can't just run a report on as easily. In fact, our system, unless it's changed now, used to be, we could only, you know, we could respond to this many calls in, within this timeframe, so if it was within 20 minutes, whether it's in 15 minutes, we could, but I'm not sure if we have the capability of running each one to give you like, you know, because we also prioritize our calls, where the fire service, you know, typically isn't having multiple calls at one time where they're prioritizing, so if it's a call that may not have a high priority, we may in essence, put it on the back burner while we take a more important call, so our response time on that is not going to look good. But, but if it's what we would consider a high priority call, then we can look at those a little differently and try and.
I, I look at myself as the elected official that's doing this, and when people come to me and say, we don't have 24-hour coverage, and this is.
Right.
I, I look at myself as the elected official that's doing this. And when people come to me and say, we don't have 24-hour coverage and this is, I need something there to say, you know, I just don't need anecdotal information. I need something. And if it's, if it's a monthly thing and you have to, you know, kind of toss out.
Well, we can, we can see what we can do that'd be helpful. Yeah, we can look to see if there's some, some ways we could report that to you a little differently.
That would be very helpful.
And, and just for the board itself, because I know most of you weren't here when, when this all began. So, you know, it was the decision of the council at that time to, to have a contract that only allowed for the number of deputies that you have. It was, it was, we, you know, if you guys are interested in 24/7 service, we can certainly provide it. It's just going to cost more. But, but we want, want to do is work with you to get the service that you want and, and help you in making that decision by providing you with the information so that you know how to best schedule it and best plan it and using our input. But the county as a whole, and I think this might be where maybe the concern is across the river, is we use a closest car concept. So when the call is dispatched, if it's a priority call, it is dispatched to the closest car. Whether it's a deputy, whether it's an MSP trooper, whether it's the city police department. They're going to come out and handle that until the, to the actual jurisdiction can arrive. So when, when we do not have a car on in the city of Sagatuck, then you're responding with our, what we call our section car, which is the general fund road patrol deputy. It's funded by the county's general fund, but they're covering four townships. So it could be a little while before they get there. But I think that might be what the concern is, if there's not somebody right here. So it may, may take a little bit of time before they can respond, but, but there will be a response. It's just it might take a little longer if there's not a specific deputy on that's within the city limits of Sagatuck.
So typically if we have a 24-hour time period, are the times that, are the times staggered about when they're on and when they're off? Or how many, how many, do we know during the day, how many hours there isn't 24/7?
So touching on that part, on the weekends, it's a little bit different because obviously the afternoon and evening hours here in the summertime is busier. So we have adjusted the day shift deputy from noon to midnight. So that way there's a little bit of overlap in the evening when the bars and the nightlife is a little bit busier here. And even downtown from noon to five is swamped down here on a weekend. So we've got him staggered that. So he leaves from 5:00 AM to noon. Now, for example, this weekend with Venetian going on, we have the art fair also, if that starts at 10:00. I have that deputy coming in a couple hours early, make sure he's here for the start of that. We've also put on a couple more reserves for the art fair going on this weekend. So I am trying to, when I know that we have events going on, I try to adjust hours if we need to, to make sure that's covered. But on a typical weekend, there's no events. The hours are noon to midnight for the day shift deputy, 5:00, 5:00 P to 5:00 A for the night shift. So that leaves seven hours. That is a contract deputy not here. Like the sheriff said, that leaves it to the, either Michigan State Police or our section car to respond to any calls.
Gotcha.
And quite honestly, usually the Michigan State Police, if it's a non-emergent call in the city and we don't have a contract car on, they will say the sheriff's office is going to take that. So I also want to touch real quick on the response time thing. I have been told there's one person at Central Dispatch that can run a report for me.
Grab it.
I am going to get with her to see how that report looks. Because as the sheriff alluded to, our response times are going to be very different because if it's a priority one call, we're obviously going to run lights and sirens like the fire department does to probably 95% of their calls. Where if it's a fraud case and, you know, the deputy's finishing up dinner, it might wait a little bit. You know, so in progress, we're going to get there a lot faster compared to something that is a lost and found complaint perhaps. So that's where our response times are going to be a little bit more skewed compared to what the fire departments will be. But the only other way for me to get response time is to actually physically pull each call up, get just, get call time, dispatch time, arrival time and go through call to call.
Thank you. Whatever you can.
I wish there was an easier way because the fire department does have a different system than us and they can literally just hit a button and it does pull up. So.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Other questions? All right, Brian, did you want to talk about some of the contract changes or did anyone have questions about the proposed contract changes? They're pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think you could, Mayor, just maybe touch on a couple more things. You know, I think your conversation related to kind of the philosophy and approach to law enforcement is, you know, going back to when this decision was made back in 2018 is, is still kind of that debate that's out there today. In fact, I pulled up the report from 2018 from the, the Police Services Advisory Working Group. And it, you know, kind of ended in the conclusion with exactly that, that whereas the city has embraced more of a staffing to need approach, Douglas believes staffing to cover 24/7 approach is best for their residents and that differing opinion to this nature, however, do not suggest a catastrophic breakdown of government operations or service delivery. And so I think we're still kind of in that, that mindset. You know, at this point, Douglas has their officers literally tracking our deputies to see when they're in the city, when they're not in the city, when they're off, when they're here, when they're taking calls, you know, elsewhere, when they're, you know, not available to take a call here and how long it's taking for, you know, somebody to arrive here. I mean, that's, that's the level of detail that, you know, they're tracking and, and I'm not, you know, upset with Douglas if they have a concern about our policing services are raising issues. And we're more than happy, you know, as staff and, and communities that are neighbors to, to sit down and to discuss those things. And we had a meeting that we were working on setting up last year when Captain Ennsfield was still here. And we're going to sit down and really kind of discuss how our contract is intended to work because, you know, Lisa's also, you know, new, I'm new. And, and so let's all kind of sit down and have this, you know, conversation. Ferry Street happened. She wanted to kind of put that meeting off when she raised some recent concerns. And I, and I have indicated to her that our contract is not designed, I think, in the way that, that maybe she understood it to be designed. I think she probably understands that now and disagrees with the level of service that, that our community has, has decided to go with. You know, she did bring up some recent concerns. I offered again, hey, let's all sit down and have a conversation so we can all, you know, work out the concerns and be on the same page. And it's not to say that, like I said, different concerns haven't come up and Sergeant Haas has been extremely responsive. I, I met with him and the captain a few weeks ago as we were kind of looking at this updated agreement and also some, you know, additional questions that I had and ways that we could, you know, just make sure that, that we're getting, you know, the best level of service we can from our, our four deputies and, and ideas of ways to increase response times if our deputies aren't on. And what does backfilling look like, especially during these busier summer months, is to try to get us as much coverage as, as possible during these, these busier months when we know that, you know, the call volume is likely to be higher. So they have, you know, reacted to the concerns, look into them. You know, there was, you know, one incident recently that Douglas raised that at Old Beach. Well, part of the details were that there was, you know, a situation that needed to be dealt with immediately. And I agree that it did when you looked at the call type, but when you actually looked at the details of how the call played out, you know, the priority of the call changed, the circumstances changed where it wasn't an emergency need anymore. And that changed pretty quickly after the officers had that call dispatched to them. Well, that's important details and information that, that really would have provided more context. So I'm still willing to meet with Douglas if they want to sit down and have the conversation. Lisa respectfully declined my, you know, the offer to meet and, and discuss this and I, that's fine. They, they, you know, don't want to discuss it in that way, but.
How long have they been tracking?
It looks like at least a year.
So.
Going on two years.
Seems like a lot of, a lot of time that they're spending on that.
So as it relates to the contract, that's before you, like I said, it was originally signed in 2018, updated in 2022. The sheriff's office, the contract is before you, essentially still provide the same level of service as it relates to having, you know, four deputies that we're contracting for. It's just kind of how we're, how they're, you know, determining the costs is changing a little bit. And that right now, we, our existing contracts is we pay for 75% of a deputy and they pay for 25%. And then we're paying for the cost of the vehicles. They've proposed essentially us paying 100% of the cost of a, of a deputy. They'll take on the equipment and vehicle costs, which essentially still breaks down to a 75-25 split. They have had some recent, I think, updates their wages and it was around 5%, something along those lines, which, you know, costs, you know, some costs increased. So, you know, the net result of, you know, the contract that's before you is essentially 30, a little over $36,000 more. So we budgeted for some increase next year. So some of that will have to be, you know, taken care of through a, a budget amendment. But, you know, I did take a look today at, I actually took a look at the other day, but at, okay, where were we at, like, you know, cost-wise over time? So when you started in 2018 with the sheriff's department, that budget that year was a little over $355,000. If you were to adjust that just simply for inflation since then, you'd be at right around $454,000. And we have $421,000 budgeted for next year. So with that increase, you're right around that inflationary increase over time for the services that, that you wanted at the time. And there was a lot of study, right? Sheriff Baker can tell you, there's a lot of study, literally call by call, when the call volume was, when should officers be on? So if there's a desire from the council for different services, more services, as they indicated, they can do that. But there is a cost to that. So at any point, that's the conversation you want to have. I'm sure they'd be welcome in that conversation too. But I think the, the point that they at home related to, it's not that we're like, it's a little bit of a missed over that we don't have anybody available. You know, if, if our contracted deputy's not, not on, as they indicated, we do have somebody to respond. It just may be from, you know, we're sharing a car if our deputy's not on, so.
I guess, if I may, I, I guess I'll ask one more question of the sheriff. You know, in what you're seeing statewide, countywide, even, even nationally, I mean, what, what is the trend of how smaller municipalities are, are policed? Is it going, you know, more, we're going to maintain a, a small little local police force or we are contracting with a larger entity or partnering with other entities for, for more service and a broader range of skill sets? I'm just curious what you're seeing trend-wise because, I mean, it seems to me that, well, I'm not going to put words into our neighbor's mouth, but yeah.
I see Fendel this year or earlier this year, last year. But yeah, especially Alleghan County in our area, are you seeing a trend with that?
It's, I think you're going to see that, you know, nationwide that there is a trend. If, if they don't choose to contract, they at least explore it. And I think it's, you know, they, they got to be fiscally responsible, you know, and do their due diligence and look at each community. And as you know, Alleghan recently looked at it and made the decision to continue with their police department, which, which, you know, every community has a different need, a different desire, a different, you know, expectation for law enforcement. And I think that that's something that needs to be made at the local level. But you do see that, you know, across the nation, there are communities that do opt to contract with sheriff's office because you're looking at the ability to maybe save some administrative costs, save some duplication of service so that you can find some savings. But, but then again, you do lose a little bit of local control because you're obviously, my position's elected. You know, there's no guarantee I'm going to be here every four years. So you're, you know, you kind of have to, to, to understand that there is always that concern, I guess, in some communities where that, where that could change. And, but I think you're all, they look at two, like you say, we, you have a larger department. Sometimes they have the advantage of taking advantage of things that they have, like a detective bureau, like some of the things that Sergeant Haas had went through. You know, we have, while we share that with everyone within the county, including the municipal agencies, you know, you may not have it as readily available as if their own deputy calls and says, I need a detective out here, I need this. Where typically we don't step on the toes of other communities that have their own police department. They run their police department. If they ask for our assistance, we'll more than certainly come and do and provide that. But it isn't necessarily coming from that agency. So I think as a trend, yeah, you, we are seeing that. But like I say, it's a decision that needs to be made by every community because sometimes it's for the best for what their needs are. But then sometimes they may find that, you know, they'd rather stay with, with their own police department and, and weigh out the, the costs and the advantages and make their own decision. I think it, I think it should be made at the local level.
Bruce?
Yeah, thank you Sheriff Baker for bringing that up and thanks for the question, Councilmember Dean. You know, having grown up in this community, my dad was on this council back in the early seventies and he was essentially the police commissioner. They didn't have that title, but the police chief lived next door to me, Lyle Jones. And so I've had the experience of having the police officers living in our town. Betty Jones, Lyle's wife, still lives up on the hill. And the reason I mention this is because I think that's the expectation is that people still have is that the officers that work here live here. I think that's an unrealistic expectation today, especially given the demands that makes on a community to be able to provide the housing as well as the service and training. And that's, when I've had people that have asked me this question, I've said, you know, look, there's no way we could have our officers be at the level of expertise and training and certifications that we would need to have to be compliant with state regulations and federal regulations that they exist. We wouldn't be able to do that. With the contracted service that we have through the, through your department, we can achieve that. Plus the services that you offer would be available to us even if we had our own department. However, it's that individual officer and deputy certification and training and support that we benefit from, for the, from the service. Would I still like to have the officers living in town? Of course I would, but it's even difficult to get our city employees to be able to live in town. I mean, it's, it's a challenge for everybody. So again, I'll go back to what I said earlier is that I, I've appreciated what your officers or deputies have been doing to help our community out. Sergeant Haas, Mike Larson, who I've gotten to know through our daughter's friendship, have been wonderful to work with. And that community aspect of that needs to be further communicated to our community. And the fact that you have deputies assigned to us and Deputy Castro, who a few times I'm up at the school, she's sitting in the lobby doing her work. So that presence, there, there's an effort being made. So again, I think we've gotten around some of those corners, but we still have work to do. So I appreciate your willingness to do that.
I appreciate it. When I started in law enforcement, in the community that I worked for, which was in the city of Wayland, I had to reside within the city of Wayland. And, you know, the, kind of an upheaval of where I'm from, but I had to do that and was willing to do that. But then shortly thereafter, they kind of changed the law where a city couldn't require their employees to live within the, the city limits. But I do see a value in that. And that's part of our hiring process is when we look at candidates, if everything's equal, you know, is the person from our community, do they live in our community? Because I do think there's, there's, there's a, you have a vested interest in the success of a community when it's your community. So I think you're willing to give a little bit more of yourself to make sure that that happens. So I do agree with you. There is, there's definitely an advantage to that. But I don't think it's something that can't be overcome. And as you've seen, and I know when we started Deputy Haggerty, Janelle was, like you had mentioned, she was amazing. And, and I think that you wouldn't know that she didn't live down the street. You know, she was, she became a part of the community. And I still think that that can happen. And we try to focus on, on selecting with your assistance, the right deputy that's going to, that's going to meet what your needs and expectations are. Because everyone has a different philosophy on what they want from law enforcement. You know, that's part of why I get elected is they, they want my philosophy, I guess. But you have a philosophy of what you want to see and we want to work with you to provide that, that, that service that you want. And so by selecting the right kind of person that fits well, we hope to achieve what you're, what you're mentioning there, even though the person might not live within the area, but they may fit within the area and, and provide what the community is looking for.
I know this sounds funny. You're going to laugh when I say this, but this is the kind of community we are. We want, we want you to be our friend as well. And because we're very friendly, you know, Sagatuck is a very friendly town. And, and I think that was when, when we did have that first, yeah, in 2018, you know, we felt like some people felt like we were losing our friends, you know, you know, Tito and some of the folks that, you know, we were so familiar with. So, and having Janelle come on, I think she really, like you said, she really transitioned to that. So.
And there's another.
Wants to be my friend.
Anybody? There, there's another nice advantage, I think, that you see that's kind of a byproduct of contracting is, is obviously we want our deputies to stay in town. You know, that's to the, to the extent that they can, where they're not being called out of town for, for an emergent call. So what happens is our general fund deputies that work out in the area, where do they come to have lunch and visit and meet your deputy? They come into town. So you're getting a little extra, you know, you policing, in essence, not to say it's free because I mean, obviously taxpayers pay for us, but you get, you get an additional, what we would, you know, can consider a, you know, a force multiplier, because it looks like you got more deputies than what you actually have because they may be hanging out in town to visit with the deputy that you have on duty.
Well, great. Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here and appreciate all you do. And I will echo what others have said is the quality of service we get and the, how you invest in training and, you know, the equipment. It's terrific. That's a great benefit of working with you.
And, yeah, and I'll add real quick, as far as response time, there's only been a couple of times I've needed to call y'all. And you're always there within minutes. I mean, just example, a week or two ago, I, that gentleman that was trying to sell his parking spot. And, and I called and within minutes there was someone here. So, I mean, I think the response time has been fine when I've been staffed, so.
Well, great. Well, thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Gentlemen, thank you.
So much. We will then move to discussion item B, the reviewing the slow no wake survey results and options on page 24. Brian, you want to tee that up for us?
Yeah, sure can, Mayor. So we've had several workshops now where you've kind of discussed a request from Sergeant Marina to consider making the entirety of Kalamazoo Lake no wake zone. As we've discussed, it's quite a, you know, process to do that. One, this involves two jurisdictions. So we both would all have to essentially pass a resolution, hold a public hearing, pass a resolution and request that the DNR. Study the issue and consider allowing us to have a watercraft control that would make the entire lake no wake. Assuming all of those things align and the wake becomes no wake, we've had some discussion here about enforcement as well and what that looks like. And so there was a request from the harbor authority to consider kind of a tri-community survey to get some, some further community feedback on this. So Douglas Township, the city, we all partnered on that survey, had it out for several, at least several weeks. Sagatuck City, I think we had the most responses, so go our community. And I think what you see from the survey results is kind of a, a, a close mix of thoughts on that. I, as Councilmember Peterson explained at your last regular meeting, the harbor authority reviewed the survey results at their last meeting. There was, they weren't able to come to any particular consensus recommendation for you. The Sergeant Wagner with the sheriff's office marine units took a look at the survey results as well. He kind of, kind of passed, again, they're willing to, you know, carry out and enforce whatever the community desires, but kind of, you know, cautioned you on a couple of things. One, the survey results were very close and it's, you know, kind of a divisive issue, he thought, that you should take, you know, do care with. He also noted that, you know, once you make a decision, it's going to be quite permanent. They're not typically, watercraft controls aren't typically reversed. And then beyond that, he made a, you know, mention of the yacht club and the sailing and, and the classes that go on there. And that, you know, slow and awake isn't just about the wake, it's also about going slow and that they're, you know, could cause some issues for the, the school that they run. The Douglas city manager advised me that the Douglas Harbor Authority met, which contains three of their council members and, and they're not supportive of the entire lake being no wake. They, so their entire council hasn't necessarily met and made a formal decision, but at least at this point, there's three of their council members that have concerns and so does their harbor authority. So from here, you know, various options for you, you could choose to not pursue any changes at this time. You can choose to, you know, pursue making, you know, the lake within our jurisdiction no wake. You could choose to look at expanding the no wake zone around Sergeant Marina. Like right now, it's about a 250 foot or so distance around the, the docks right now. But expanding that out could help dissipate some of the weight concerns that are there. You could also look at some, some restrictions on maybe the size of boats that are creating wakes or whether or not you wanted to restrict some sort of skiing or tubing during certain hours. If that was a concern, that was creating a lot of wake. The other piece is real quick that kind of came up from the harbor authority is whether or not to, you know, add maybe some larger signs on the Blue Star Bridge to be a little more prominent. Sounds like the Douglas Harbor Authority might have a little bit of interest in that as well. There are existing signs there. From my perspective, I think they're adequate. I don't see concerns with them, but if there's a desire for. Larger signs or more prominent signs, we can look at that too.
Just to follow up really quickly on the, on the signs, on the bridge. When Ryan sent that out, he said, well, there are signs on the bridge. None of us, and we're not constant boaters, but a lot of the harbor authority members were and they go, there's no signage there. So they're, they're not something, they were talking more hanging on each side of the bridge, slow wake ahead, that type of thing. And I understand there's some pushback from somebody about putting a sign on the bridge.
I haven't heard.
Okay.
Pushback, yeah.
I, I don't know who you talked to about said, he was, said there was signage there already, so.
So Sergeant Wagner with the Marine Division noted that there are, you know, yeah, because Councilmember Peterson is correct. Initially, the harbor authority didn't think there were signs there and asked for us to consider putting signs there. When I come to find out, yeah, yeah. So his point was, well, there are signs there, but it goes to show you that folks maybe don't see or follow the signs as much as you might.
So, you know, one thing that I want to mention is on page 24, where you see the map where it shows the no wake area. But why doesn't it show along the shoreline and in front of any of the marinas? Why is that not considered no wake? Because that's where most of us have the issues. Is, you know, near, I mean, we're talking on the Douglas side here, but when you're talking about safe harbor marina. Anywhere along the shoreline, the shoreline on the Sagatuck side, that's not indicated. Isn't that supposed to be all no wake near a shoreline or near a docked boat?
It is. So what the map is showing are the no wake zones that are in addition to state law that are specific watercraft. State law requires that within 100 feet of a dock or shore that you still be going.
Strangely enough, there are not no wake signs along those areas though. Is there a reason why we don't have no wake? There are no wake signs that are kind of over by. Let's see, kind of where Mike Johnson lives over on that side. There's no wake buoys along that side, but there aren't any over by where you don't see the red and white stripes. And you don't see them in front of the marinas. Is there a reason? I mean, in front of Sergeant Marina, you do, but that's it. Do we know why it's not indicated? Because it is a major issue.
Sure. I guess, just simply speculating a little bit. So if you actually have an additional watercraft control beyond state law, there's a requirement that, you know, actually be marked and displayed. And so there's some additional requirements there. So the state law, to my understanding, is I have a specific requirement that, you know, the areas be marked. Certainly I've seen in various waterways throughout West Michigan that there are. Property owners that may choose to, you know, try to mark those areas, but that also requires some permitting to place additional markers out in those areas. So.
So in a nutshell, anything beyond, you know, so that should be assumed and most people should assume that, but they're not. Is what I'm.
Yeah, they should definitely know or as a prudent boater know that they need to stay at least 100 feet away from a dock or shore.
Okay.
So it's 100 feet away from a dock or shore.
The state law is that Michigan boats must operate at slow no wake speed within 100 feet of the shoreline. Mored or anchored watercraft pier swimming areas and swimmers.
So in between the buoys, in front of Red Dock, in front of Safe Harbor Marina, people go full speed between the buoys. And that's, and I, and I don't want to say this, but I have to say it, an enforcement person was going full speed. I won't say what agency, but it was an enforcement person that was going full speed. And I just feel like if that person doesn't know, why would everyone else know?
So when you say between the buoys, what are you?
So there's buoys that are red and green buoys that basically mark the navigational channel that's near Safe Harbor. In between those, it's right next to, you know, docked boats.
So I would say.
And people are going full speed there.
So the navigational aids are there to show kind of the safe passageway of where, you know, boats safely to reverse. That's not necessarily marking a distance.
Okay.
That you have to be from a dock or shore to be going slow and awake. So now that navigational aid is exactly within 100 feet from where your, your dock is and they're going on the inside of it closer to your dock, then you would be correct. That would be a violation. I would say that. 100 feet is probably a lot less than folks probably realize. It's like, like you would think that 100 feet is a lot. It's actually not. That far when you're considering the body of water, from my experience.
Okay.
Lauren. You're, you're on the water more than all of us, huh?
Yes.
Do you see a lot of that activity or do you see it once in a while or sometimes?
I just see that people are doing it too close to the docks, full speed.
A lot?
Yes, and too close to the shore, full speed.
And often?
Often.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't see what would, you know, I mean, you have to talk with Douglas, you know, on that particular side of the lake and see what kind of sign ordinances they might have. But I don't see why you couldn't put a sign on your dock that says, slow and awake within 100 feet of this dock.
It probably needs to happen on a private basis. Okay. Yeah, otherwise I feel like the, the survey is showing kind of a 50 50 split. I'm not in favor of changing to the whole lake being no wake. That's my opinion, even though as a business owner, we do get rocked, our boats get, you know, rocked. Our people get rocked on our floating docks. But that being said, it looks like our residents and people in town would like it to stay. An area where people can tube and jet ski and do things that they've done for a long time. That, that's my opinion.
I agree. And, and the one thing that just brought up to my attention was the, the fuel area. I saw a comment about the fuel area and I agree with that, but knowing the 100 feet. That, 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 you know, that should cover that. And perhaps they should think about putting signage up at those places, so.
Well, Sergeant Marino, right, the fuel docks on the end, in that case, the, you know, the slow and awake zone is 250 feet away.
That makes me feel even stronger to support what, what Lauren just said, so.
Russ.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Anderson. So again, putting on my history hat, my dad, when he was in council back in the early seventies, Sergeant Marine came to the city, at that time, the village. With the same request and my dad happened to get a petition around town, had 274 signatures on it opposing the no wake zone and the entire lake. So this has been around for 50 plus years. And I just want to thank everybody that responded to the survey, 700 plus people to respond to the survey, pretty good response rate. And as with prior, prior discussions on the subject, there remains a wide range of perspectives on this. And no clear consensus supporting the implementation of the entire no wake zone for the lake. Reading through it, the strongest threads I saw in comments that were made is if it isn't broke, why fix it? And that Lake Kalamazoo, again, this is the position I've taken. This is a recreational harbor for the use of many different constituencies. And to limit it to a no wake zone for the benefit of a small number of users would, I think, take away from the value of the lake. And again, not seeing any compelling data from our, our enforcement officers and not seeing any other data that, that would. Compel me to say there's an issue that's arisen because of the no wake. Without that data and without compelling arguments, I'm, I'm not supporting the request.
Yeah, you know. Nature's kind of solved a lot of this problem for us.
Yeah.
I, I would love to see that map with, with current depths of the lake. The amount of areas you can safely navigate are quite small at the moment. Doesn't mean the problem's going away. I, I mean, I do have to look at the survey. I agree completely. It's classic Sagatuck. Class, like, I mean, I haven't seen, so there's other issues and similar. But it is interesting. I mean, if you look at what people are doing predominantly, you know, the water skiing and the tubing is about what? 5% of the respondents, that's what they do in the lake, you know, we see what everybody does. It's, you know, over 75% said, or 76% say they'd like just to cruise around in sightsee. You know, yeah, maybe some folks like to cruise fast, that's fine, but, you know. This is not a hill to die on for us, I don't think, you know, particularly if Douglas is not into it. But there are ways to, I think, help everybody stay safer. Maybe we do need to look at more, to the mayor pro tem's point, more markers, more signage to help folks understand where the no wake zones are. Because people do have a hard time with distances. People have a hard time navigating. I mean, how many times have we seen boats have to get pulled off the, off the mud now? Because, you know, they, they think, oh, that's a perfect spot to do a loop, you know, with a tuber. I mean, I don't think I'd really want a tube in about six inches of water, but, you know, scary.
I, and, you know, there, a lot of people will say, you know, see, you know, people that are tourists and maybe they don't know a whole lot about boating. But believe me, when I'm out there with my friends CJ and Kimberly, a lot of the people I see out there are locals that are breaking the wake zone. In fact, I remember not long ago, RJ Peterson and his little Riverview Queen doing roundabout circles in front of his house, which was clearly a no wake zone. But I just want to say that, you know, it's not always the visitors that are.
I mean, I'm, I'm just as guilty as anybody. I mean, I like going fast too, but, you know. I mean, the other thing to consider at some point, you know, not this year, obviously, but maybe next year is, you know, do we consider just like a, you know, a. Channel, like a high speed channel. All the channels seem to be shifting. That's the other problem we've got. The place that was deep enough to, to safely navigate is no longer deep enough. And it, it, things change on the river a lot and they change in the lake a lot. So I don't know if that's viable. But signage might be, increased signage, you know, you think the, the bridge signs are adequate, but maybe we need some more buoys.
I, I think the perspective of the harbor authority were the two things, enforcement and signage. When she agreed, that's what they kind of hung, we kind of hung our hats on.
So that maybe some more of the no wake buoys mounted. And I think whoever, who it seems to the community, they should be, they should be thanked for putting the red balls in. Nobody knows, nobody seems to know.
Nobody knows who did this.
But at least, you know, less boaters are having the expensive happen to call Togo USA to get themselves pulled off the mud now. So I mean, then Uber did that, did a favor to the community, frankly.
Remind me again, who sets the buoys at the beginning of the season? What jurisdiction or what agency does that?
Yeah, for ours. Howland, help me.
It's the cities.
But who does it?
Boatlifts Unlimited.
Boatlifts Unlimited.
Yep, so. We have, you know, to your point about, you know, some good citizens doing what they can to try to help folks navigate the waterways safely. You know, we have been looking into as well, getting some more formal depths and getting some, some formal, you know, permits into. I was referred to the coast guard on it from the, DNR sent me the coast guard and so they've sent me the, the forms that need to be filled out to kind of, you know, look at, you know, some more permanent markers. That are legal and, and that sort of thing. So that is in the works too. Obviously, we're into the season and that process takes some time. But something for us to certainly aim to have installed for next season.
Is the marine patrol involved with the boat lifts unlimited when they set those buoys? Because I would think the marine patrol would be the most knowledgeable as far as where those buoys should be set. You know, being that things change every single year with depths and, and different things. Okay, alright.
Okay. I thought I said DNR doing this type of activity, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
In the, in the coast guard, if they're looking at doing something, it's, it stops though where their jurisdiction stops, right? They're not talking about putting something in the harbor, are they?
When you say putting something, yeah, what?
You were just saying that the coast guard is looking at reviewing where they have boundaries.
Yeah, so for us to put some additional kind of aids to navigation to mark some safe boundaries, because. The lake and the river are connected to the Great Lakes. It's their jurisdiction to make that decision.
Right. Well, I thought, I misunderstood. I thought you're saying they would help put some more.
No, I, I asked them that first, if they would do it. They said, well, here's our form if you want to apply, so.
Something I like where you're going with the aids to navigation, because aids to navigation is kind of a nice way to not take away anybody's freedoms. But to help them make better decisions.
Yes.
I mean, because it's, you know, you're going to wreck your boat or your prop, or you're going to bury something, you know, you don't want to do that anyway.
That's a good way.
That is not fun.
Yeah.
No, it's not. It's offensive.
Well, okay, looks like we will move on without pursuing a no wake zone. Which takes us to discussion item C, the Spear Street streetlight removals. Scott. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Here we are again, about the streetlight on Spear Street. So, you know, back in our, at the May 12th meeting, we, we discussed this at length after receiving some requests from the, the residents on Spear Street and their dissatisfaction with the light. So brought it to you after some conversation with Consumers Energy to, to put forth some options, since we really don't have a formal city policy on this for staff to follow. So we thought we, based on previous conversations with consumers, we thought we had a few different options. And ultimately selected one that we thought was the best fit, which was just deactivating the streetlight. And, and then after a six month period of being inactive, then it would be a slight reduction on our bill for that. For, we pay a flat fee for all our streetlight bills, so. So after council gave the direction to deactivate the light, immediately reached out to consumers. You know, advised them of the council's wish to deactivate it. And then a little miscommunication on, on Consumers Energy's part between their municipal rep and the streetlight team. So reached out to them again after not having the, the streetlight deactivated and then. You know, had a little bit more conversation, a little back and forth about that, but then ultimately got notification from them that they're no longer offering the deactivation service, unfortunately. So they basically said, if we have a choice, we can deactivate the light. Estimated costs for the city would be about 500 bucks or we can leave it activated. So still not having, again, not having more formal policy on, on, as a direction for staff to follow. Just wanted to bring it back to council for some direction.
I'll kick things off, Mayor. I was in favor, based on the residents of Spear Streets. Comments, you know, went back when we first took this up, to either remove it or shut it, shut it down. I think the consensus of the council was turn it off, leave the optionality there. But I made a commitment, you know, then and there that, that I agreed with the residents that it should. Be out, you know, and if that means taken out, I'm in favor of it being taken out. I am pleased and grateful, not only that the community's been patient with, with the city, but I'm also grateful that they're willing to. Pony up the money to pay for its removal, because I am a big concern that if we create a precedent, because we've heard that other. Other neighborhoods are, would like their lights removed as well. And, you know, if we have 100 lights, that's $50,000. Everybody in the community wants it out. So we, I, we do have to be careful about the precedent we create. So I'm still in favor of it being taken out, even if it costs $500. I'm grateful that the citizens of Spear Street are willing to pool their resources to help prevent us having a precedent. to help prevent us having a precedent where we have to suddenly be on the hook for removal of any, pay for removal of anyone if anybody else wants it. Um, but I would like to, you know, I thi- I think we should challenge consumers to be a little bit more forward-thinking about the, the overall issue of light pollution. Um, you know, I think everyone thought they were doing the right thing when they went with, uh, super-efficient LEDs, but the, you know, the whole warm versus cold, you know, I'm not an expert on, on lighting, but it's, people are right when they say that it's different and it's bright, and, and it's disruptive to, to their lives. Uh, I, I believe, um, one of the PPW members, Mr. Judy Field, Nancy's still on, maybe she can comment later, um, is looking at, uh, the dark skies initiative. I'm wondering if, if we can, maybe, maybe it is somebody from PPW to bring it back to us, you know, to work with consumers to say, you know, we're looking at this issue. Um, you know, what else can be done to keep the community safe? Uh, have the, the amount of light that's necessary, but do it in a more thoughtful way. For example, you know, Councilman Gardner, um, had the, um, shield installed and light by his house, and he, and he's reporting that it's very effective.
Yeah, I'll have a comment in, in a moment.
Yeah, so, you know, there are things that I think could be done, and, and I'm just, I'm a little bit disappointed that consumers came back to us with like, uh, you can either take it out for five hundred bucks or it stays up. You know, I, I don't really like that kind of answer, you know, they, they clearly must be hearing from other communities about this issue, uh, particularly if the township in Douglas are taking up possible, or have ordinances, or are taking up ordinances. So I would like us to explore this more, uh, I, I'd like to get this done for the residents on Spear Street immediately, because they've been very patient, you know, about this, and they had bad information to start with. Uh, we all, we all did, um, but I would like us to have a more holistic plan, particularly if, if that's the desire for the community. Uh, I'm very supportive of these arguments that uh, excessive light, that's not well-directed, not well-thought-out, that, you know, just because LEDs are the latest technology and they're efficient, doesn't necessarily mean that they are the answer. Or particularly the answer, you know, you deployed at a high level from an existing fixture. So I would like to keep this conversation live, but I would like to get this problem solved for the residents of Upper Spear as soon as possible.
Uh, Chris, uh, I supported, uh, this action, uh, for two reasons, first of all, the light hadn't been there for thirty years, and second, it was a dead end. Um, I wouldn't support removing light structures probably anyplace else. I think we need them for public safety, we've had complaints from, uh, uh, employers saying our people are afraid to walk up the street to the high school because it's so dark up there, so I, I, I agree with, with what the, what, uh, council member Dean said about they've been very patient, and I support it because of just those two things, it's a dead end, and it hasn't been on in thirty years. Beyond that, I would need a lot more, I think, thoughtful approach or discussion before I would be supportive at do- doing it anywhere else.
Exactly what Chris said is what I would say.
Same.
Same.
I was the sole no-vote on the original motion, and the reason I was the sole no-vote is because I supported the city staff's recommendation that this not be removed, uh, because it does set, I believe, a precedent for other areas of the community that may decide, I don't want a light on my street. What policy do we have, and to the point that Councilmember Dean made is that policy, and I think, uh, Ms. Kimble made that comment as well. We could, we would benefit from having a policy to help direct our city staff when these requests are inevitably going to come to us again. Um, I would add an additional option in this situation, I mentioned it, uh, when we first had the debate on this and didn't have an experience with it, so it was, it was not carried forward by the group, or didn't seem to be interested to the group up on Upper Spear to have this option, but um, since this all took place, um, an LED cul-de-sac was installed on Spear Street between Holland and Butler, uh, directly across the street from my house, if you have not driven down at night, drive down there and look at the light. You will see a distinct difference from that light and the standard LED lights. It has solved several problems on my street, including stray light up into the sky, as well as stray light up into the second floor of my house. We have blackout curtains in our upstairs bedroom because of the previous light. This cul-de-sac light has solved that problem for our house, I've, I've done an informal survey of all the neighbors, and most folks, you have to explain to them what they're seeing, because at first they don't really see it, but once they see it, they're like, oh yeah, I like that. The only survey person that I did that had a complaint about it was that the way the light is installed, it's called a cul-de-sac light, and you'll see it, it's, it's like a straight-line light. And it doesn't illuminate to my side of the street, the sidewalk is not illuminated. And so, one of the people that live near here said, that may be a problem for pedestrians on the street. Now, we haven't noticed an issue, it's been in, I think, for about three months, maybe, three, four months. And we're right in the busy time of the year, and I've not experienced any issues with people walking up and down the street in the dark. But the way that the light's installed and the arm that's on the pole, it's very possible that consumers with some direction could adjust that light to make it more centered out to the street. But I would suggest this would be an interim option for anybody, including the group today, to have that put in, to see if that's going to solve the problems, because it, it, it has taken care of a lot of the stray light, because I support a dark sky concept, too, um, is taking care of the stray light as well as taking it out of the second floor of the homes that are nearby. So it seems to me to be a pretty reasonable solution, um, and I would say that would be something we'd want to put into a light policy going forward before we remove a light completely.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I have some concerns, I, and Chris says it wonderfully about setting precedents and, and even, you know, doing this one-off thing, especially for a council member, gives me a little pause, because I don't think we all want to be having stuff on our streets done. Um, but it's good to get some intelligence on how that works, um, I think before we start, we have to, it works for me on Spear because it's a one-off, it's never been there, they're gonna pay for it. I think, um, before we, I think then we look more holistically across.
I agree, I, and that, that's the only thing, that's the only reason why I support it, and, and, and I would be very, um, hesitant to support any other lights. Again, it's low-trafficked, it's end of the street, or it's a, a dead end, um, they hadn't had it for thirty years. Um, and they're willing to pay the five hundred dollars, um, with those things all in place, I'm all for having this done. But when it comes to any more streetlights in a city, um, I'm gonna have, I'll have a bigger issue with having to turn it off or remove any. Um, I, I really like the light initiative, I know we had Betsy York on the show, uh, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, and that introduced that, when it wasn't really that much talked about at the beginning, Betsy York was a big proponent of that, and, um, and I like that idea. Uh, but I do, I do have to remind everybody that we are in the city here, a functioning city, a busy city, uh, with folks that work and live here, and, uh, they do need those, they do need the streetlights, uh, but again, in that space, in that place, I'm all for it.
If I may, just a couple more.
Yeah.
Items, you know, I, I, I had to walk with, um, with Consumers Energy, there's, their street, one of their, one of six of their streetlight employees, um, that's all they have, six. Um, that's kind of shocking to me, but I had to walk with them along Butler Street regarding the, the outlets, uh, for the Christmas lights that you all will be hearing about soon.
Right.
Um, and it was funny, on the interest, on the, on the topic of, um, of dark skies, uh, while we were walking, we also, you know, we didn't see progress on the Spear Street light yet, so I, I started talking to him about that. Um, and, and then I, I forgot how exactly it went, but it was some of the effect of, um, hey, you know, what about shrouds, because we're starting to talk about, and before I can say it, he said, dark skies? Um, he's been, consumers have been hearing about dark skies initiatives for a very long, uh, for a while now, it's, it's definitely a growing trend. Um, and if, if there is a desire to have a, a bigger conversation about that, I can't speak for consumers, I know that they have a small, you know, they're a large company, but, um, i- it might be good to reach out to them, because he, Kyle was telling me about some examples of where some communities were really pushing for dark skies, and then once it happened, they're like, wow, it's too dark. Uh, there were problems with like emergency services finding street or addresses on houses, um, and it just wasn't what they initially intended, so they've, you know, consumers have some experience with taking out the streetlights and then putting them back in, in certain communities, and then, and anything and everything in between, so, um, it's, it's not to say that that would be the case here, but it seems to, they seem to have some pretty good knowledge, um, of, of it, about what the pros and cons would be, uh, and maybe some things that we're not exactly thinking of right now, but.
And, and I know where I'm at, the three hundred block of Butler, in the four hundred block of Butler, we have talked about over the years how dark it is over there. Um, I, so I think there are improvements in places that we can get better lighting, um, because it really honestly does, if you look past three hundred and the four hundred block, it's really dark past that way. Um, so I think there's opportunities for improvements, but I, in, in this case, I think it needs to go. I would think that Consumers Energy isn't crazy about that movement.
Yeah, they, they, they hear a lot about it, but, uh, one, one more point to consider, too, I, I know that part of the recommendation that you had heard of on, on May twelfth, uh, was also, you know, if the desire was to deactivate or remove the light, there were also some certain traffic control measures that we would be recommending as well. Um, you know, engineering, um, really wanted to, you know, for, wanted council to consider at least putting some traffic control signage by the pedestrian path, uh, uh, over by, uh, you know, Jim Selman's property. Um, that's not necessarily what I would recommend, I think if we, you know, personally, I think if we, if, if the desire was to remove the light, if we just put some sort of no outlet or dead-end signage near the intersection of Grand and Spear, that should be plenty, that's just my opinion, but.
Mm-hmm, I agree, uh, I would like to see that as well, uh, uh, dead-end signage there.
Okay, um, we will have this on the agenda on Monday. Um, and I think, you know, maybe, um, if we decide that we want to put more energy into this, I think we'll just need to look at our priorities and see, you know, what we might shift off so that we don't, um, unduly burden staff.
Well, I, I, I agree, Mayor, I, that's why my thought would be, too. I mean, Scott already, you know, advises the Parks and Public Works Committee, I believe Judy Field.
Yeah.
Is, is scoping this out, so to me, it seems, let it, let it get hashed out of the community at the PPW level, and let, let, let something more fully baked come to us, so we don't have to divert this council from, from all the other things we have going on, because I think this is going to take some time. Um, if, if, if there is somebody that is somewhat of an expert or has some experience at Consumers, plugging them into the PPW uh, subcommittee or whatever it is that's looking at this.
Yeah, they might be willing to come and do a presentation for us, too, so.
Yeah, and I, I, like, I think to the mayor's point, I, I would probably do it at the PPW level and see what, 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 something more fully baked could come to us eventually, you know, because I, I agree with the mayor, we shouldn't get totally thrown off task about what can be done.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Yeah, one more point, you know, to add to that, too, you know, you, you're gonna hear a, a, um, more expansive plan about our capital improvements needs this, this fall or winter. Um, and part of that plan is, you know, we have the city-owned Sternberg Lights, uh, those are those kind of cast iron black, um, you know, maybe ten, twelve feet tall, uh, light structures that we have, a couple in the Rose Garden, Willow Park, one right outside of City Hall, if you want to take a, take a look at that one. They're very old, um, they're kind of a rat's nest of old electrical wires, some of them have been, you know, have caught on fire in the past. Um, and, uh, so, you, you know, that'll be a cost, too, and something that we can kind of consider, um, holistically with all this, so.
Chris?
Yeah, just for clarification, um, so I, I know we're not going to take a vote, but I, I'm not in support of moving forward with the dark skies. Um, so for it to get kicked into the PPW and them to do some creation and then bring it back to us, that kind of gives the assumption that, yeah, we're gonna do it, and I just want to be clear that I don't support it. And, uh, if that's, that's the route we take, I just, I want to be on the record for that right now. I don't, if you want to have them do it, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, to, just to respond, and to be clear, I'm not advocating any direction, I just know that the PPW has discussed it, that they're already looking at it. I'm happy to listen to anything that one of our, if, be it planning, be it history, be it Parks and Public Works, I'm happy to see what they come up with, I'm not advocating anything, but.
And just to clarify, Parks and Public Works have, there's nothing that we're asking staff to do at this point, more just education, um, and possibly down the road, just like we've done with invasive species on our website, just having a link with information on our website at this time. Nothing further with changing our ordinances yet or anything until city council gives us direction to do so, and right now, we don't have that direction from council to do so yet. Um, if that's something in our strategic plan, in the next strategic planning for the year ahead, then that's something we can consider in the year ahead.
Exactly, I think, for example, the shroud, this, uh, this cul-de-sac device is interesting, you know, and, you know, it'd be nice to, to see something, because from what I've looked at, you know, when, when Karen dropped this forward, I started looking at, at the issue. I, I don't think anybody's advocating taking away all nighttime safety lighting. There's thoughtful ways it can be done where, you know, it is accomplishing the public safety objective, but it's also minimizing the environmental impact, you know, and, and the impact on people's circadian rhythm, so there are, you know, we have learned, you know, we have learned, there are things that we've learned, so I, I just, I would like to be educated some more, I'm not advocating going one way or the other, but I would like to be educated some more.
Yeah.
And if there's people that are willing to do it, citizens that are on our committees, just to take it up and do it, then putting something to us to educate us, I'd like to be educated.
Yeah, I, I agree, I'd like to be educated more in it, too, and I don't take a stance one way or the other, I just don't know that much about it in a city setting. Um, I, I don't feel that we have a very big light pollution problem here in the city of Sagatuck. Being in cities and then living in the country as a kid growing up, um, when you look up into our skies, even with our streetlights on, you get a pretty good view of the stars compared to any other downtown city that you're in, even South Haven or Grand Haven, so I don't think we have a huge light pollution problem downtown, um, in the city of Sagatuck. Um, so, but, uh, but I would like to learn more about it, and I would like to learn, you know, uh, what the alternatives are, uh, so that we maintain our safety.
I appreciate the clarification.
Great. Anything else on this? Thank you, Scott, thank you Spear Street residents, noting, too, that Jim Selman sent us all, uh, an email, uh, earlier, so we had that as well, so. Uh, that takes us to public comment, the second public comment period, if anyone, uh, in the room has anything to say. Anyone online, public comment, or?
Paul Whitfield.
Ah, thank you, Paul.
Hi, everyone, uh, Paul Whitfield, four fifty Spear Street, uh, as you guys were just talking, uh, there may be a need for, uh, more signage. I live right at Spear and Grand, and there's a huge, uh, no-outlet sign already, so nothing's really needed.
It's in front of his house. I'm sorry.
Right in front of my house.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah.
Thanks, Paul.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, correspondence, we did get the email from, uh, Jim Spear.
I'll include that on a Monday chat.
Great, thanks.
Jim Selman.
Jim Selman, thank you.
Yep.
You know, names, many names.
Names.
Okay, uh, council comments. Agreed.
Um, golly, uh, uh, oh, uh, happy anniversary to Scott Herbert and his beautiful wife and his beautiful family, and he was smart by getting his flowers on time, and back to the future flower shop. Uh, I just want to let everybody know that Music in the Park is tonight, seven to nine P M, there's going to be a, a band of whiskey bound, and, uh, there will be bubbles to be had, so I'll be there blowing bubbles as well. And so maybe we'll scare away anybody that might be under the gazebo with the fun that we have.
I was looking, looking forward to, uh, Music in the Park tonight.
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Russ?
Yes, thank you, um, again, when it's dark, please come down Spear Street and see the light. No pun intended.
I'll be there tonight.
Yeah, please do, it, it's, um, it's a distinct difference, and, and again, I hope it's not an experiment, because I don't think we have anybody on our street that doesn't want to keep it. So just come and see it. I'm also, too, want to thank everybody, Sheriff Baker, thank you, Under Sheriff Larson, Sergeant Haas, the other deputies that are here this evening, um, appreciate your service to our community, thank you.
Chris, I would echo that, we have your back, thank you so much, I've been in this from the very beginning when it first started, and, uh, it was brutal, there was just, that's no way to say it, it was just brutal. And I appreciate your commitment to this town, and, uh, thank you for all you've done, and I I won't remember your names, I'm sorry, because I'm old and I forget, but, thank you.
I will add my thanks especially to Sergeant Haas, um, but I know that you and our city manager have great ongoing communications, and we really appreciate that. It is, uh, critical to all of us to, to have that, and we sincerely appreciate all you do and invest in, uh, our safety. And with that, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Meeting adjourned.
Jamie, do you need these back?